Welcome to this regular school committee meeting of Thursday, January 24. We will begin looking at our wonderful art on Board A, which is over there with the words Bracket School on it, all the artists from Bracket School. We have grade five paintings. Students in grade five first examined three paintings in which movement was depicted by abstract artists, Elaine de Kooning in a style called Expressionism, and Carlo Carra and Natalia Goncharov in a style called Futurism. In both styles, artists abstracted by leaving out details capturing the main idea or feeling in a subject while also moving the brush in a way that matches the feeling that the artist wants to express. The students later were instructed to create a painting which depicted at least one person, animal, machine, or object in motion. They were asked to emphasize movement in a manner that suggested energy or motion. So that's A. Moving around the room to B. This is grade one. They did, using lines constructively, made tree line painting, tree line drawings. For their first lesson, first graders revisited the element of line and discussed how lines can be found everywhere in our world and that artists can use different kinds of lines to express their ideas more fully. They examined and discussed several examples of line drawings by various artists. Next, they were shown several paintings of trees done by different artists and explored how each tree was represented differently using varying and often unexpected types of lines. Finally, they were instructed to create a line drawing of their own choice, but they were requested to use a variety of lines and at least one tree. And they were encouraged to think about how lines can be used to represent the many parts of a tree and different species of trees. Moving to this side. This is grade three, creating tiny treasure boxes. Third graders discussed the use and decoration of container design. They discussed how this wooden box created by a Japanese artist had the special purpose of storing incense. Noting the planning and execution of design upon a three-dimensional cube and its possible function and purpose allowed students to realize that everyday objects can be made beautiful with artistic skills, by artistic skills. Students were given a template of a box, which they were then directed to decorate using pencils or markers, giving special attention to how one side of the box could impact another side, as well as the top and bottom, in a wraparound design. And they were trying to have a theme that could be chosen to successfully unify all the sides of the box. Moving to Board D. These are paper pendants. They're from grade two. The question was asked was, why do people wear jewelry? Students in grade two learned how people everywhere have decorated themselves with jewelry since ancient times, often for many different reasons. They examined and discussed several different artisan pendants, some of which were incorporating necklace structure as well. The examples ranged in time period and materials, and students were looked for clues to help them decide how each pendant was created. They enjoyed seeing how the different cultures have varying styles, how different artists use the same materials differently, and how styles have changed over time. They were later instructed to design and create their own pendant using paper and aluminum foil. They were encouraged to use additional decorations with markers and pencils. And then finally, the back of the room, we have graphic design for cereal boxes, grade four. They were shown three consumable objects, three consumable items, a bottle of glue, I hope they're not consuming that, a box of mints, et cetera, and asked to look carefully how their packaging, at the packaging, to identify what all three had in common. Students noticed that all three packages had use of colors, pictures, company logos, fonts, and letter styles. Students discussed why packages of items we purchase make use of special design elements and that such elements are planned and designed by artists known as graphic designers. The role of the graphic designer was explained, and a list was generated of the many things which employ text and pictures that graphic designers plan, which we use and see every day. Students also were shown several examples of laundry detergent bottles, and were led to notice that planning the visual and text elements within package design can convey visual messages to consumers. They were then told they would be designing a package for a fictitious cereal brand of their own naming. They were encouraged to invent mascots, logos, and company names. They were required to use pictures and lettering, as well as think about fonts, font sizes, color replacement, and visual elements. So those look like some very interesting cereal brands, soon to be seen on shelves near you. So thank you Bracket School for your wonderful art, for sharing it. At this point, we have public participation. My understanding is that there may be some people who would like to speak on the discipline and suspension data, and if so, I'd ask that you hold your participation until after we have a chance to have the presentation. So if you, I'm going to go through the names. If you were planning to speak on that, just say so, and I'll move on to the next.
I have a question on that. Actually, I have a comment that is sort of separate from that, but will there be room for question and answer on the presentation? Because that's.
We don't, we don't have question and answer during public participation. You have, you have three minutes, so that's, so Rajene Sinaja?
So Rajene, yeah, I can, I'm.
Okay. Lynette Martin?
Aye.
Okay. Kristin Fontanaz?
Aye.
Mia Kistala?
Aye.
And Sarah Evans?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. So moving on, we have the AHS Students' Public Policy Start Time. Are they here?
Let me just give a little introduction, or actually, maybe Mrs. Sanzito or Dr. Jangor might want to talk about this policy class.
Oh, yeah. Dr. Jangor? Dr. Jangor, can you speak about the policy class?
Mrs. Sanzito's here, too.
Oh, Mr., okay, yeah.
Hi.
Sorry, didn't see in the background. Yeah, we need you up on the mic.
Okay, okay.
Hold the mic towards you.
Hello.
Can you explain what the students were doing?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Joe Sanzito. Colia and Ben here participated in my intro to the analysis of public policy class this past semester. You know, this class is about having students kind of get involved in the community and try to figure out solutions to what they perceive to be problems, ultimately do some good throughout the town or the school, and then actively do some research to solve a real-world problem. And Colia and Ben did some great research over the course of the semester. We're taking a closer look at moving the school start time back, and that's what their presentation is going to be on today.
Okay, great. And they had contacted members of the school committee, and they were requested to come and present the, members of the school committee wanted them to come and present their information. We appreciate that they were able to do so.
Thank you.
May we stand?
Sure, you just need to speak into the mic, so you can carry the mic and move around a little bit.
Okay. Is that too close, or is this?
It should be, that's fine.
Talk loud.
All right. All right.
There is a vitally important student health issue here in Arlington High School that affects 75% of our students. This issue is sleep deprivation. 28% of high school students in America acknowledge falling asleep at least once a week in class. Weight gain can be caused by sleep deprivation because not getting enough sleep can increase hunger arousing hormones and decrease hunger suppressing hormones. Researchers have shown that academic success, as well as problem solving, irritation levels, and general well-being is affected by how much sleep you get. So we can see how vitally important the sleep deprivation is, and we have statistics that show how important the issue that is in Arlington High School, and we believe that this is a societal problem that we have a solution to, or at least something that can help decrease the negative factors.
Right. So kind of summarizing what he just said, we have this problem. It's having the school start time so early decreases not only the health of students because of their, it messes with their sleep cycles, but also then decreases their potential economic opportunity because they may not be reaching the same amount of success that they could reach in had they been more alert during class time.
So here we have a graph that shows the, every year, the Youth Health Safety Coalition sends out a survey to high school and students in Arlington schools. They ask them a bunch of questions about things such as alcohol and drug use, and this past year, they added a question about sleep and the question, what do you get, less than eight hours of sleep every night? And 70, about 75% of students answered yes, which shows that 75% of students are sleep deprived because researchers and scientists, American Pediatric Association recommends that teenagers get 8.5 to 9.5 of hours of sleep a night. So by getting less than eight hours of sleep, the students are sleep deprived. And we talked to the guidance department, and because this question was not on the survey for, available for us to look at for past years, we had to look at how stress affects sleep and talk to guidance about that. So when we talked to guidance, they told us that they believe they saw a trend of upward stress over the last 10 to 15 years with online grading, standardized testing, the overall ramp up with high school and college preparation stress, and that that stress correlates with the lack of sleep. The more stress you have, the less sleep you get. So that's why we're confident in being able to show this trend line of upwards of lack of sleep, and we're confident that in the coming years of this survey, if we do nothing, that we will see more and more students being sleep deprived. Now, what are the effects of the sleep deprivation? So health-wise, we see that, we know that drunk driving is a humongous issue, especially with teenagers, and we have a lot of programs that aim to fight that and stop that, but we really don't take the same approach to sleep deprivation and how it affects driving. Many thousands of deaths a year are caused by people who do not have enough sleep, who are sleep deprived, and driving accidents have occurred to that, so that is a major health risk of sleep deprivation, especially with students, especially upperclassmen who are driving around early in the mornings when they might be very tired. We can see a possibility of accidents, we want to decrease that. The other thing is, especially in the last 10, 15 years, we have seen an increase in the approach to mental health and decreasing negative mental health issues in students, such as addition of Wellness Day, which really aims to help students with their mental health. And sleep deprivation can negatively affect people's mental health. People who, it's like a vicious cycle, people who do have mental health issues, their issues are worsened by not getting enough sleep, and these mental health issues can also be brought into occurrence more if you have less sleep, and it can cause you to lash out at yourself or others if you have these mental issues if you are sleep deprived, which is another reason that we need to start looking at solving this problem. The other main idea or effect of this problem of sleep deprivation is education. Arlington High School is a high school where our main goal should be educating students, and if they do not get enough sleep, they cannot pay attention in class, and their grades go down, their academic performance goes down. There are multitudes of studies that show that academic performance negatively correlates with not enough sleep, or with, yeah, with not getting enough sleep. And the other main thing to this, the reason, the scientific reason for this is mainly REM sleep, Rapid Eye Movement Sleep. This is a time of sleep that is critically important for students' health when it comes to memory and learning encoding, and we have a chart coming up that will go deeper into that. But next, we are just going to talk about some of the sources we looked at, because it's very important to understand the scientific and backing to why sleep deprivation is so bad. So we looked at large national groups such as the Student Health Foundation, National Sleep Foundation, Harvard Health Publishing, and they all had a lot of documentation that showed how bad sleep deprivation is. So this is REM sleep, and this is, it shows here, we have more periods of REM sleep, which are good 15 to 45-minute periods of sleep during a sleep that is a very deep sleep stage, and it occurs later in your sleep cycle. So you have more REM cycles in the early morning, the 4:00 to 7:00 a.m. range, as you can see here, and that's, those cycles, these periods of REM sleep are so important because they help you learn. Memory encoding is increased in REM sleep. It's when you have these vivid lucid dreams that help your brain develop and help you encode and remember information. So if you've ever been woken up in the middle of a really lucid or vivid dream, then you've been woken up in the middle of REM sleep, and that means that your mental health and your learning is decreased, and that's why it's so important that we deal with this.
All right. So we believe that moving the school start time to 8:30 versus keeping it at 8:00 would help solve this problem, and we know that this policy has actually been in the works. So why 8:30? We've discussed times 8:15, 8:45, nine o'clock, even later. Now, if we moved it only, you know, 10 minutes, 15 minutes to 8:10, 8:15, we wouldn't see that much of a change because that's a minimal, you know, change, and we believe that in order for the, in order for us to truly tackle this problem, we need a meaningful time difference. However, if we move it later to 8:45, nine o'clock, we would conflict with after-school programs like mainly sports teams, as well as any clubs that may meet after schools. And we don't want to, you know, mess with students' lives too much because we don't want too many students to be stressed out by this because that would defeat the purpose of this, of this policy. So how would we implement this problem? How could this policy, how could we get this done? Well, we know that the Middle Sex League has been discussing this change across all of their schools. We know that Lexington High, I believe, started even earlier than Arlington High, and they've also been discussing a later start time. And we believe that it would actually be quite, not as difficult as it could be implementing this policy because we are in this Middle Sex League and we have, we've been discussing this with other schools. Furthermore, if we choose to implement this policy, we believe it would go pretty smoothly because we would trust the administration of Arlington High, as well as anyone on, you know, Arlington School District, and we believe that this policy could be implemented smoothly and, you know, effectively. Now, with every policy, there comes possible issues, you know. What, what issues could arise by implementing this policy? Well, one, as I previously discussed, we need to be mindful of our after-school activities, especially knowing that it can get dark pretty early here in Massachusetts, and there are certain sports that need a lot of daylight practice time, and we don't want to take that away from them. Furthermore, we've been discussing how this could affect teachers' commutes in the morning because moving the school start time later would allow them to commute later, and this might put them, you know, more at risk for getting into rush hour traffic, mainly because many other adults are commuting, you know, in the 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock range because many work full part, full-time, you know, nine-to-five jobs. And we believe that moving the school start time to, you know, too far, like to 8:45 or nine o'clock, could cause problems with that, too. However, we also do know that many students give morning, morning time to their students, and they come early to prepare for classes, and they wouldn't be affected, be affected much by this policy either. And for conclusion?
So often, what's brought up in opposition to this policy is the idea that students will just simply sleep later, get up later, and then get the same amount of sleep. We won't see any of the benefits we want to see from this policy. But that's a fundamental misunderstanding of how sleep science and mental health works in this case because of two main reasons. First of all, that adolescents' brains are specifically wired to wake up later and to sleep later. We just, like, as a child or as a teenager, you want to sleep late, you want to sleep until like 11:00 or 12:00. You see this often with kids on the weekend, and you want to stay up late. That's just how our brains are wired. And so by, even if we get the same amount of sleep, if it's pushed back 30 minutes, it can help us. Another thing is the REM cycles I talked about. Those lie in the latest times of sleep, so if we are able to have those cycles not be interrupted by having the school start later and by having students have the ability of getting up later, it would be very beneficial to their memory and their learning and all those positive mental health things that we would like to see. And when it comes to this whole issue, we need to rethink how we look at school start times and how we look at sleep deprivation, because often, it's really not taken seriously. People may just say, oh, you're tired. I was tired as a teenager, too. We have to get through it, right? But student, but sleep deprivation is more than just being tired. It affects many different facets of teenage life. It affects their mental health, as we looked at, and how it can make people more likely to hurt themselves and others if they have mental illnesses. It can be, it can make teenagers more likely to use alcohol and drugs, or studies that show that if you get less sleep, you're more likely to be a drug user or an alcohol user. And then finally, the thing we looked at with car accidents that is, sleep deprivation can cause and worsen car accidents. So it's really not just about how tired you are necessarily, but how that tiredness can affect all facets of your life, and that's why it's so important that we implement some kind of policy to help mitigate the issues of sleep deprivation in teens.
And finally, I'm not sure if questions are allowed at these meetings, but if, if they are allowed, we would entertain any questions you might have.
Yes. At this point, we will have questions. Mr. F.
I had the benefit of going to the public policy class.
Yes, you did.
Thanks for doing this again twice for me. Appreciate that. The, you know, I did ask you in that class, in the public policy class, the question, are you going to still go to bed at the same time? And there was a debate among the students because I said if you went to bed at the same time. So you have come up with an argument that, just like, tell me like your, your research on that argument. You guys came up with this argument that says that even if you, because I asked you at the meeting, if you're, go to sleep normally, I don't want to pick a time to embarrass myself, 11, 11:30, wouldn't you just stay up another half hour later if you knew the school was a half hour later? There was a debate in the class, but then you did some research, and you said, it doesn't matter if we stay up another half hour later, we're still going to be sleeping later. So where, just tell me where that research, what did you guys do?
So again, with the worst-case scenario, that the students just sleep later and get the same amount of time, I don't remember the exact source off the top of my head, but there are multiple, I think I was looking at the American Pediatrics Association, and I think the National Sleep Foundation had resources that talked about how adolescent brains are wired differently when it comes to when they need to sleep and wake up.
So the sleep times matter, okay.
And it's also secondarily, like, a little bit related to that, is that teens' sleep schedules are really irregular. If you have a teenager, you'll know this, that they're, they go to sleep on the weekends really late, like Friday night, Saturday night, and then they get up and sometimes then like 11:00 or 12:00 in the morning, I have friends who get up like really late on the weekends. And then they go back to school, and they get up at 7:00, and that's just not healthy for us to be going to sleep 11:00 p.m. and getting up at 11:00 a.m. one day, and then the next day, getting up at 7:00 a.m. That's just our circadian rhythms, and it's just not healthy for our body. So by shifting the school time back later, it makes all the sleep times over the weekend and the week, week ends and the weekdays, it makes them more similar, and it's healthier for teens.
And furthermore, so we actually, sorry, I just, I was going to say.
How much sleep did you get last night?
Yeah. I mean, I got enough. But we know that, first of all, we do believe that Arlington students value their education. We know we are a highly performing school, and we know that these students aren't being, like, they don't want to just go to bed later. They're mostly being forced to go to bed later because, you know, things add up with practices and after-school activities, homeworks, maybe jobs. There's a lot of parts of teenage lives that teenagers need, and we don't believe, we believe, we believe that teenagers wouldn't just want to go to bed later. We believe that they're only going to bed so late because they may have other things going on in their life.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thanks for doing the additional research on that question.
Mr. Hanner.
I cannot tell you how impressed I am with your presentation and your willingness to go forward with this. You've achieved a level of maturity that a lot of adults don't make in their entire life. Quick question. Has this affected you in your approach to looking at things as far as sleep deprivation and things? Have you learned something?
I mean personally?
Personally.
I mean, for sure, doing this class and, you know, having this experience of having just class time to research a problem that we feel that we need to, you know, solve, we've definitely learned many valuable skills about research and about just how to solve problems in your community. And furthermore, we believe that when it relates to this issue, not, we don't believe that this will, like, personally, this would help me very much, and I believe that Colia agrees with me.
There are days when I get up and I'm just super groggy and tired, and, you know, I was just in the middle of a dream, and it was a great dream, and I really wanted that dream to finish, and, you know, especially, like, last, last week, I had, it was Thursday, I just wasn't doing great. I'd like crashed out at 1:00 p.m. in the middle of history class, and just having that extra 30 minutes, you know, maybe making my sleep schedule a little more regular would really help me pay attention to my classes and make sure I catch every single thing that my history teacher says.
Another point, on Wellness Day, we started at 8:30 instead of 8:00, and I believe that was almost like a test for this policy. And we talked to multiple students, especially ourselves, and we found that many students did like getting up half an hour later, even if it may not have affected their entire mental health as well as we would have expected. We believe that they did value getting up later, and we believe that many students were happier about it.
I'd just like to add one thing.
Okay.
I agree with you 100%. I hope it happens, but I'd like to state for everybody, this is just one aspect of dealing with all the issues that you, your generation is facing, and all the pressure and the tension. This will help, help, but it can't stand alone.
Of course not, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Schlickman.
Yeah, my question is this, is that when we started to talk about this a few years ago, we were looking at the impact on the Middle Sex League, because that was a big problem for us. Other districts have all sorts of transportation and busing issues, which we don't have because we're a small town, people can walk to school. What's going on with the other schools in the, in our league?
So when we talked to Dr. Jangor, he mentioned that they were, that in the Middle Sex League, there are conversations about pushing, how we can push schools' times, start times later and still have traveling games work for sports. So we believe it's an issue that's being discussed, and that making sure that the time and times of school matching, is matching up will be happening.
They've also been trying to have every school in the Middle Sex League start between 8:00 and 8:30 in the morning, and yes, we are already in that window at 8:00, but obviously we have research to show why we should start at 8:30 instead. But basically, yeah, it's about correlating all of our sports games and practices so that we have game time for all the students that wish to play sports.
I know Winchester bumped back. I was wondering.
Yes.
Who else may have?
We didn't research exactly, but we, we know that these changes are either in the works or they have happened in the past.
Well, knowing that Winchester's already started and other schools are doing this, and that it's compatible with our athletic schedule, is a big argument in favor of making this move, because that seems to be the biggest restraint we had.
Right.
When we started talking about this a few years ago. I'm very impressed with your presentation, and having worked in high school, having gone to high school, once upon a time, yeah, I think that makes perfect sense.
Dr. Seuss.
So thank you for your presentation. I've been following this issue for a couple of years, and I have to say, I think you hit on the points that have been mentioned, that have been researched, that I've seen there. I think shifting the time is, would be the most important thing that we could do as a district for student well-being, for social-emotional issues, as well as academic achievement. So kudos to you. As you know, we are, we have been talking about this.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, in the last couple of years, we've had actually two surveys on it. The survey that we recently had had even more support as people sort of got used to the idea, and as the shifting happened with the Middle Sex League. We've been talking about potentially adopting this policy. We have right now a meeting scheduled that we want to invite the public to, to air their questions, concerns, and comments, and that will be on Monday, February 4th, starting at 6:30. You're welcome to come. You know, I'm sure there'll be people with concerns, parents with concerns, other kids with concerns as well, and, and a notice we send out to parents as well pretty soon, but I wanted to mention that. Anyway, good job. I do have one question, if I can. So the graph that you have that shows that, that students since 19, is it 2014 till now and then the projection in the future?
Yeah.
Shows that students are getting ever increasingly less sleep. Is that because, I mean, that's not because the time is changing of, about waking up, is that, you think, just because of the demands?
Well, we talked to the guidance department and multiple counselors, and they told us that stress levels have been increasing mainly because of not only looming college applications, but also online grading and students having access to, you know, their performance in school all the time, and they may have more and more worries as time goes on.
And social media is also a big.
That, too. And so we believe, and we know that we can confidently estimate that stress levels, because they are increasing, therefore, sleep will also be decreasing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I actually have a question for the committee. So.
Go for it.
So we don't, we don't know the extent as to how much this has been discussed, but we obviously focus this policy on AHS in particular, but has this been discussed for Arlington Middle School and any other schools in the district too?
That segues into Dr. Bodie giving us an update.
Right. The answer is yes. When we did the survey, we asked the question about the middle schools as well, and I will have to say that both teachers at both levels and parents are in favor of this change. So the answer is yes. Another reason we have, if we do it at the high school, we really need to do it at the middle school in Gibbs, is because there's shared staff.
I see.
And we can't have the schedules that out of sync between the two. So yes, it would be both. And for that reason, we're having this hearing for people to come and talk about it. We're also, the, Jason Levy, who is the president of the AEA, and I were talking about schedules at each school to, to talk with teachers, and, and my expectation is this is something that we need to make a decision about probably before vacation or certainly soon thereafter, so everybody can plan going forward. So yes, the short answer to your question.
Great. So, thank you very much for your timely presentation.
Excellent joke.
At this point, Dr. Jenger on suspensions and school discipline update.
No, Mary Villano.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not on our, it's not on our thing.
Study abroad? Done online? It's online, I don't know why.
Okay. Okay, so I'm working from the print, and I've been told that I'm incorrect. Mary Villano on student study abroad.
Hello, I'm Mary Villano. I am the foreign exchange program coordinator for Arlington High, and with me is John Stanki Jr. at the high school. And we're going to talk just a few minutes about a program that several of our students were able to participate in this past summer for the first time. And basically, they were able to travel abroad and participate in different types of programs, through scholarship that was made available. I'm going to give you a very short overview of how this happened and what the goals are, and then I'm going to turn it over to John so he can talk to you about his personal experience. We were approached in 2017 by CIEE, which is the Council on International Education Exchange. They had received a considerable amount of money from Sharon Long, who was the former CEO of Hampton Brown, a pre-K to 12 educational publishing company of language and literacy materials. She has a very strong interest in global education, based on her own personal experiences, and what she would like to see happen for the young people in the country now. So she donated this money to CIEE, they formed a partnership, and it led to the program that we were able to participate in. We started by filling out an application. A lot of the questions and information they were looking for was our commitment to global education, languages, travel, that sort of thing. And I'm going to read their mission statement. It says, "The goal of the Global Navigator Scholarships is to prepare students to navigate across languages, connect with cultures, and develop global competencies for thriving in today's interconnected world." We completed the application, and a few months later, we heard that we were awarded $25,000 in scholarship funds for Arlington High School students in grades 9, 10, and 11. We were one of 90 students in the country that were awarded scholarship money. We received a letter of acceptance, and they listed several commendations that were specific to our school, and I just want to give you what those commendations are, because I think it speaks a lot for what we do at the high school. Number one, a strong commitment to global education, travel opportunities for students, goal of developing global citizens, the variety of world language courses offered to students, multiple opportunities for students to travel abroad with staff throughout the year, partnerships with schools from a variety of countries where our students stay with families in those countries, and our most longstanding exchanges are with Japan and France. Our strong international exchange program, and student achievement in global education, and the sale of biliteracy that is awarded to qualified students each year. There are three categories of travel opportunities that students can look at, and there's multiple types of trips in each category. The first is language and culture, where they offer instruction in several different languages. The second is service and leadership, where students will get involved in a community project in environmental issues, community development, and children's rights. And the third category is global discovery, where students focus on specific fields such as marine science, global entrepreneurship, wildlife conservation, digital filmmaking, and other types of studies. We had seven students from Arlington High travel this summer. Most of the trips were about three weeks long. Five of them were in language-based programs, one was a service program, and one was in a global discovery program. We just heard recently that six students accepted our, awarded scholarships, our merit awards for the summer of 2019. So our goal eventually is to grow this program, and I think if we become larger, they'll give us even more money. So it's a wonderful opportunity for kids. So now, I'm going to turn it over to John, so he can tell you where he went and how it was.
So as Ms. Villano mentioned, I'm John Stanki. This summer, I traveled to Shanghai, China, and experienced the language immersion program that they offered. And there, I attended classes during the day for about two hours, and then went on, like, certain field trips with the group to different regions around Shanghai. I also stayed with a host family there, and I still have connections with the two parents as well as the kids. And I feel like the program really enriched and helped improve my language experience. At the high school, we don't offer a Chinese exchange program, so I felt like CIEE provided something that a lot of my peers were receiving from the school, and I was able to experience something similar.
That's our presentation, so if you have questions?
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Schlickman.
So, tell me a little more, how long were you in China?
I was there for four weeks.
Four weeks, and what sort of prep did you do to get ready for this?
I had to complete modules monthly from January up until May, and they had me do various tasks, like learn about what Shanghai was as a city, what people valued in China, and specifically in the city, how to deal with, deal with situations where there might be a language barrier or cultural differences.
I mean, Shanghai's a fascinating city.
Yes, yeah.
And there's been all sorts of development there over the past 10, 15 years, so even residents there are amazed at what they see when they turn the corner. But in terms of your mind, what were the things that really caught your attention there that maybe you weren't expecting?
The, like, level of transportation that they had was amazing. It was very efficient, very clean, and it was everywhere too, yeah.
Yeah.
Very accessible.
Yeah. Okay, sounds positive. I mean, have you recommended this to other students?
Yeah, I think I recommended the program to one of the students that got accepted, and I think she's going to Spain this summer.
Oh, great.
Any other questions?
I want to thank Ms. Villano for the application process, which was pretty intensive at the time, but I think that they, we were very pleased when we got the, the results back in terms of what they recognized that we were doing in the, in the school. We have a global competency certification too, that students can choose to sign up for and have, have that on their transcript. We know we've offered, we offer a lot of opportunities for travel, but one of the things that always is a challenge is that, you know, our, our level of scholarship is limited. So this was a huge opportunity for our students to have the travel opportunities without the burden of, and the families the burden of, the cost. And so, one of our hopes down the line is creating more scholarship money so that this becomes something that more and more students can take advantage of. So this is a great start, so pleased, and I'm glad you had a wonderful time.
Thank you very much for sharing this with us. Is there any action that you need us to take at this point, or is this just informational?
This was just information. Yeah, important for you to know that this was happening.
Great. Yeah, no, it's fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're back on the paper agenda. Dr. Jenger and Mr. Maringer, suspensions and school discipline update.
Oh, there you are. Tell us your place, Brian. I can't tell you what's going on in the middle school. I was just going to throw you under the bus.
So thank you for having us, and I'm glad we have a peanut gallery of folks who are interested, because I think this is a, an incredibly interesting topic and an important one. When the presentation got sent out, it was sent out with sort of raw materials, and apparently folks got it, and they did the same thing I did the second I saw these numbers, which is to get out their computers and start sort of figuring out how they affect different groups and what the, the effects were, and people wrote me about that, and mostly, I just wrote back, "I agree, that's what we're going to talk about." So, we would like, so we're going to talk through a little bit of the discipline data. I've added into the presentation that you have here a few slides, just to sort of outline my conversation. It's a pretty complicated topic, and I will not be able to cover all of the things we are doing, all of the things we're thinking about, all of the issues and analyses. So I'm sure people will have particular areas that they are interested in, and we will happily, I'll happily address those as well, and we can know that we're working on those as well. So, if you just skip down, I mean, so if you look at the numbers, and I'm going to talk mainly to the high school, you see that we have, this current year, 49 suspensions, 42 students total, that it was 10 female, and 32 male. If you go back, if you scroll down through the, the presentation to, just jumping ahead to the discipline trends, the issue of out-of-school suspensions in particular is something we've been looking at for a long time, and we've been looking at it for two primary reasons. One, because out-of-school suspensions are an indicator of behavior that we would like to improve. We want fewer behaviors that would occasion an out-of-school suspension. Second of all, because out-of-school suspension as a disciplinary approach has generally been shown not to be particularly effective at improving students' behavior. The purpose of that sort of punitive discipline is it lets the community and the students know, "We are serious about this issue, this is not acceptable in the school," but it doesn't change the behavior of the students themselves. In fact, separating students from schools has generally been shown to be negative for the students who are suspended out of school. That hasn't always been our experience, but it's absolutely something we want to deal with. And last but not least, those sorts of negative disciplinary incidents have been shown to have really significant racial disparities, and you'll see that in our data. And so obviously, reducing those and looking at the way they're impacting different populations differently is really important for us. So, why don't we skip, can you just skip through these down to the part, if you go all the way on, keep going, keep going. Are you, are you doing your PDF? Yeah, so you're on your PDF version, not on the Google Doc?
Right.
Okay, so then it doesn't have it there. So, so I'll just talk through it though.
Excuse me, do you have it on, on your?
I do have it on my computer, but I don't think, do you have a dongle? Can we put my presentation up instead?
What about a USB?
The drive that you had didn't work.
Oh, it didn't work?
No, that was actually a clicker.
You said it's a Google Doc?
It's a Google Doc, it's your Google Doc.
So I can just log into Google and then it'll be there?
You might want to take it off the screen.
So they're a little out of order, I didn't want to mess people up. But I'll just talk through this. So if you look at suspension data over time, the year before I became principal, we had 96 out-of-school suspensions, and we immediately said, "Really, this is not an approach that we want to use." Over the next few years, if you look at the data, it's been around 50 suspensions a year. So, going back the last four years, it was 56, 53. In 2617, it spiked to 70, and I'll talk about that for a second. And last year, we were really working very hard through collaborative problem solving and a lot of other efforts to get those numbers down. So I was pretty disappointed when it came back in, that the number had only gotten to a little under 50. So we went back down to 49, but we didn't get below sort of what had been our usual year. So the question for us is, why? And so, we look then at the data, and you look at the breakdown of the 42 students who were disciplined, and you find, again, the racial disparities that we've seen in the past. So if you actually look at the breakdown for ethnicity, we have 60, 59 African-American students on their records for last year, and we suspended 13 out of school. That means we suspended 22% of our African-American students out of school last year. It means you're seven times more likely to be suspended out of school if you're African-American. So that's obviously something we really need to think about and address and break down, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and some of the things that we're doing to continue to address it. So I broke out the numbers to try to get a better handle on that. And there were things that I realized in spite of my initially, initial sadness, that had worked. One major effort was that last year, we were piloting collaborative problem solving, and we were feeling that we were very successful. And in fact, around this time last year, we were on track to have only about 24 suspensions of the, through the year. We had 14 suspensions as a result of one incident at the very end of last year, so if one excludes that, we actually got the number down to 28. And so, that's heartening, but again, it's not entirely a win. The other thing that we realized as we go back through the suspensions, is that what ended up happening was that through the collaborative problem solving, we reduced the number of suspensions that were the result of conflict behavior, but we didn't reduce the number of suspensions that was the result of the ongoing drug problem in the school. You have 15 suspensions as a result of drugs in the school. One of my fears, if we get too focused just on numbers, is that this year, I actually expect suspensions as a result of drugs to go up, because we're really fighting to police that issue in the school, and to make it clear to the students that that behavior is not acceptable in the school. So we, we have sort of two things going on at once. So, the purpose in this analysis for me is to try to do two things. To identify areas of concern, to figure out, let me get my little notes here. So one, we want to reduce discipline issues. Two, we want to reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions overall, just because they're not a good thing. Why? Because they're negatively impacting people, because they're an indicator of overall discipline, and because of racial disparities. And then, in addition, we really want to use the discipline analysis to identify areas of concern for further analysis, and for areas that we need to figure out additional interventions. And then we want to analyze our interventions. So, our conclusion at this point, and I'll go back a little bit to the racial disparities in a second, our conclusion at this point is that if you break out the numbers, it really does appear that collaborative problem solving was successful. It wasn't successful for all students, but it was successful in reducing certain kinds of conflicts and certain kinds of behavior. Our second conclusion is that we need to address the issue of drug use, which is on the rise. And then our third was that the impacts of collaborative problem solving did not equally positively affect our African-American community at the first stage. Part of the reason why the numbers actually look worse this year is because the percent, the number of African-American students suspended out of school went down a little bit, but the number of students overall suspended out of school went down a lot, so they become a much higher proportion of the students suspended. And so we really need to work on that. I'm just trying to think if I want to look a little bit more on the numbers. So, there is another number which is important to take into consideration, and it's not waving away the problem, but it does put a little bit of scope on it. In Arlington, until recently, we have a program called Jermaine Lawrence, which is part of Youth Villages. That program had a large number of students cycle through. And so if you look at the suspensions, five of our suspensions last year were students in the Jermaine Lawrence program. That program is disproportionately, it doesn't have the same proportions as, as Arlington. That program is disproportionately, it doesn't have the same proportions as Arlington as a school. And when we look at the fifty-nine number, those five students don't represent just five students within the fifty-nine, and it's a little hard to understand this, but students cycle through the program. The only way I can explain that is, I once was doing research, and I went to a school, and at the school, they said to me that ninety-five percent of the students who start the year finish the year, and then at the same time, they said they had a forty percent mobility rate. And I was like, "How can you have a forty percent mobility rate if only five percent of your students aren't here at the end of the year?" And the answer was, because, if, think of it this way, five percent of their students came and went every month. So over the course of a year, that was fifty students over out of a hundred, let's say, that were new to the school, forty percent of the overall population, even though we had a population that was steady. So, in one piece of our numbers, one thing to look at is that those five suspensions don't represent five out of ten students, but they represent five out of about thirty-five students. And I'm actually, I have the exact numbers on a lot of these things, but I sort of don't wanna share them, because they're small numbers and they're small individual students. What that means, again, is that reduces, doesn't, doesn't make the problem go away, but it reduces the number of African-Americans, I mean, sorry, the number of students that are suspended out of school substantially in the proportion. Nonetheless, we suspended, from any way you look at it, about ten percent of the African-American students who are in the school are here all year long. So if you've got a population of sixty students, you've still got six students, which is a pretty large group of those students who had a negative experience in terms of their behavior in the school and doing the sorts of things that they did. The next analysis, which is worth looking at, if you go back up to the one about what are the offense types, and I will admit that the state reporting puzzles me a little, so I went through and did my own analyses, and in terms of understanding them. But the most important thing to understand is that, at this point, we really do not suspend students out of school for behavior that is not a substantial real threat to the building. So we're talking about drugs, harassment, sexual behavior, theft, threat, assault. And, so, those are the behaviors. And the ones that I'm most interested in looking more closely at are the ones that are really conflict-based, because conflict within the school is something which, if you're not, if we're not being culturally proficient, if we're not de-escalating with certain students and we're escalating with others, we may see that the student engages in a behavior that leads to suspension, but we have to look at the precursors. And that's, for me, the biggest part of, and I just wanna talk a little bit about collaborative problem solving, because we really are very excited about that. At this point, this year, what do we say? We've now suspended eleven students total for the whole year. It's not actually what it says on there, for some reason it said twelve, but it's actually eleven. And that's as of today. Now, we get nervous, because I also just told the whole school that if we caught them with THC, we were gonna be suspending them and having an expulsion hearing. But we really are finding that the conflict levels within the school are down, those suspensions are almost all for drugs. Not all, but almost all. And the success at lower levels as well are getting much better. In terms of what it is we're doing, just for people to understand, last year, we trained the administrative team, the guidance counselors, the social workers, and some of the sub-separate program staff in collaborative problem solving to see whether it worked, and we were really very excited about this success. This year, those, that group of folks is going through coaching, and we're having another group of about seven staff, teachers, some classroom teachers, and then some other specialists also trained. And the people who just came back from that training all came to me afterwards and said they wanna go to the tier-two training to be trained to be trainers. And those folks will be coached as well. So we're doing, every other week, the group of folks gets together, looks at a case of a student that they're working with, and addresses coaching on how you do that better and more effectively with the student. And the idea is to focus on building skills, right? For us, to de-escalate the conflict and to focus on skill-building with the students so that they don't escalate to the point where they're having these sorts of issues. The plan is next year, and we're working on the logistics of how we do this, but to actually train the entire staff. It's a two-and-a-half-day training. Mass General is actually rewriting their program so that they can train it in the structure of a public school, 'cause their goal, they came to us and said, "Well, you do a two-and-a-half-day training with the whole staff." And I was like, "You find me the comprehensive public school in Massachusetts that has done a two-and-a-half-day training with the whole staff, and I will do it." And yet, we don't have one, that's why you're the first. So, they've been talking to us, and so the plan is to break it up into larger chunks and to use as much of our PD time as possible, and then to do the coaching through building meeting time and other release time. The goal then is that you then have every single teacher in the school who is trained in how to de-escalate using those techniques, how to work on skill-building, and how to understand fundamentally that in all of these things, I mean, when I look, when we go back and we look at, and I talk about the conflict-based discipline, every one of those, if you really look at it, is an example of lagging skills and unsolved problems. Right? It's, the kid was not able to de-escalate, and the staff was not able to de-escalate, and that ended up leading to, or it was, it's not, actually, most of the time, it's not staff. The kids involved were not able to de-escalate with each other, and they don't have that, that skill set. So for us to work on that skill set with the students is the thing that's really gonna change it. And one of the things that I think is really important about that is, we know that there is implicit bias, because we live in America. Right? And we know that implicit bias means that certain kinds of conversations and certain kinds of conflict are going to disproportionately affect certain populations. And we've done implicit bias training, we've worked with Carlos Hoyt, we've done surveys with the students, we have inclusion days so that the students are having conversations with each other and with staff. We're gonna do that again in the spring. You can do all of those things, but if you don't have a structure and a norm that everybody understands that causes us to engage in a conversation of not, "You don't do that because, Plan A, but this isn't working for either of us, what's up with that? And how do we solve this problem? What's going on for you that is leading to this?" So that the teacher can understand that. If we can't get that to be a structure that we do in the whole school, and that's building on what they're doing at the elementary schools, it's building on what you guys are doing at the middle school, if we can get that as something that we all do, and then we go get coached, 'cause it's not gonna work. And if we really do a good job of this after we train everybody, it'll work for about twenty percent of the staff to start out with, and about twenty percent of their interactions. It didn't work for us right away. But if we can go back and be coached and talk as colleagues about what does work, I think we'll really transform the process. I hope that when we come back next year this time, we will see substantially better numbers. I don't think that we will necessarily see lower numbers, but I think the disparities will be different, and the breakdown of behaviors will be different. That's my hope. One last thing. So, conclusion to say, so CPS pilot, staff training, ongoing work on school culture and climate, I won't even go through that list again. And then we really need to, and this was actually something someone wrote in a letter to me, and I said I agreed with that, and Marilyn agrees as well, it's not that easy to get at this data and to really muck around in it. And when I do, we really do find interesting things. And so, we, you know, I really need support of the school committee to help us, to help them, and to help me figure out how to make it easier to really look at the granular level of where these things are going and how they're being reported. And, at the same time, the out-of-school suspensions are just the canary in the coal mine. Right? What we ought to also see is that then, you know, the next level down is in-school things, detentions, and conflicts and interventions. We wanna see those low going down, and more importantly, we wanna see outcomes for all of our students going up. We also know that there are racial disparities in the performance of students. We have fewer minority students in our upper-level classes, and we, you know, we have, within level, grades are the same, but because of the differences in weight, that also has an impact on GPAs. And so we really wanna work on those sorts of progress issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I do now, questions?
I think, I think you go first.
Yeah. Great, thanks for having me tonight. I think, you know, as I've just been here since July first, I think one of the strengths here of Arlington is that we do look at data like this and we have these conversations. So, thank you very much for inviting me. Not knowing specifically some of the suspension reasons for last year, I tried to look up over the last two days of kind of what kids were suspended for and why. One of the things I would love to look is, there was twenty-one students last year that were out-of-school suspended at the Audison. In going over kind of some of the data today, a little like Matt said, one of the key contributors to that number was unfortunately Jermaine Lawrence. So if you look specifically at the data, six of those twenty-one students were associated with Jermaine Lawrence, 'cause I think one of the first things I looked at was the overall suspensions, and I said, "Wow, there was twenty-eight suspensions last year between the Gibbs and the Audison, there's only ten this year, things are working real well." However, if you look at last year, the amount of suspensions that happened with the Jermaine Lawrence students, it skews the data, and we're probably right on target for the same amount of suspensions this year as we were last year. As Matt said, one of the things that I think we try to keep in the forefront of our mind is, when we do suspend someone out of school, what is that reason? And I think that reason is a substantial disruption to the school day, that there might be a threat given, it might be an assault. I think the days are over, that might have been five, six years ago, where kids, I think, were pretty well suspended just because they were problematic in school. I think we, you know, at the middle school, we also realize that suspending kids out of school usually doesn't have a positive result. Usually, we wanna keep them. We're dealing with kids who are twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old, they're gonna make mistakes. I think Matt would agree, we'd rather have them make the mistakes at the middle school level than at the high school level. And, for a lot of our kids, they're learning, and we'd rather address that, have them with an adult, if at all possible, in school, work on, you know, the class subjects that they might be missing, and hopefully, give them a safety net. So, when I looked at the data, you do see some disparity. It wasn't as great as when I looked before, looking a little bit deeply at who the kids were. You know, there were, for example, there were five African-American students that I looked at originally that were suspended out of school. Three of them were associated with the Jermaine Lawrence program. So that means kind of two students who were kind of in, in the middle school at Audison were suspended students. So, I think like Matt said, a lot of the things looks a little deeply at, why are we suspending kids? What are the reasons we're suspending? Who, and we have to, as the administrators, look at ourselves and, you know, our implicit bias and, and things, and why certain kids get suspended. You know, I would like to have, as I'm sure Matt would, we'd like to lessen those numbers. I think kids at the middle school level are gonna make mistakes. We've suspended at the Audison, five kids this year, three of them were as a result of social media posts. Those things are sometimes out of our control, but they spill into school because they're either threats, or they're threats against other kids. And when you have that, it's difficult. I think that's one of the most difficult things that we're dealing with at the middle school, is things that are happening outside in the community and that spill into the school, which is why I'm glad, you know, you see people active in the community who care about this subject, because I don't think, a lot of times, this is a school-specific issue. But I do feel like you have to have that conversation between the community at large and the schools. And I think, for the community, they have to hold us accountable and look at the data and ask questions, and we need to appeal for help. So, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions about some of the data that we have. That being said, there is some data that goes back five years, I've only been here seven, eight months, I'll try my best to answer those questions. I know, as someone who has been a middle school educator for twenty years, I think one of the big changes was when Governor Patrick decided that he was gonna change a lot of, you know, kind of the view of suspension. And I think it had schools more or less change the way they did business. I think, five years ago, if kids were being problematic or being disrespectful, it was easy just to ask them to go home, and that was done, you know, in buildings that I was at before, where now I think we try to get to a little bit more of the root causes of why kids are acting out, and hopefully, you know, be able to catch kids so they don't fall farther behind.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hainer.
Two things. I noticed in the breakdown of offenses, you have just tobacco, where the high school has drugs and tobacco. And I accept tobacco as a drug too. Is there any other, other than just tobacco for suspensions?
Not, not that I know of. I can't sell, tell you that everything is, like, we haven't found anyone who hasn't just been tobacco, and that's kind of what we've found unfortunately with the increase in vaping.
Right.
You know, we've had kids this year that have vaped, and we've had to deal with, you know, I think before in a lot of other districts, that's an out-of-school suspension. It's not here at the, at the Audison. We understand kids are gonna make mistakes, they do. We haven't found any other drugs so far this year at the Audison.
My second question to Dr. Jangar, you talked a lot about dealing with the, all the other issues, unless I missed it, except the, the drug aspect, dealing with the problems with the students and stuff. And I realize that's a major, it's a basically separate thing from, in behavior, as far as threatening people and, and other people. Are we doing anything more with that, as far as helping those kids, the drugs?
Yes, I mean, I-
I don't mean to oversimplify it.
Yeah, no, I mean- Sorry, I'm probably not close enough. So we are working with the Arlington Youth Health and Safety Coalition, and we've been doing a lot of, I mean, probably more talking about than doing about at this point. Not that we're not doing a lot of things, just that we talk about it all the time. We are doing public information campaigns, we've actually been doing, one of the things we just did recently was, we decided that we really just need to talk to the students, we've been having class meetings where we talk about it. One of the things that's really important for the issue of THC, I mean, for us at the high school, again, when we're talking, vaping is the issue. Right? Because vaping is very difficult to catch. And, so there is vaping of nicotine, but there's also the vaping at the high school of THC. People are bringing in vials of medical marijuana, or medical THC. And it's, it's really an issue. You know, we are letting the parents know it's an issue, we are having public information campaigns, we've spoken to all the students about, you know, providing assistance in terms of drug reduction, programming, therapy, counseling if they come forward. When we get a stu-, when we have a student, part of our issue, part of what we do when we catch students who are involved with THC, is we really use it for a diversion program. They are suspended out of school at first.
For use?
For use. Use or possession.
Not dealing.
What?
It, just for the use?
For use, they're suspended out of school. The law states that for marijuana, and it's lucky for us, given the way the law rolled out, that marijuana is specifically cited in the law, because the law states that marijuana is still an expellable offense. Not that we wanna expel students for having marijuana. We hold an expulsion hearing for every student who is found in possession of marijuana in school. In that expulsion hearing, which is part of the, after the, you know, as part, as part of the suspension, we go, begin a collaborative problem-solving process with them. Because the issue for us is, what's up with that? Like, why is this happening? What are the underlying issues? How are we gonna address that? We get the parents involved. And then we have a number of conditions that we're able to bring the student back on with some structure around the process. And so, the law, actually, we met with some, a number of experts and folks, I can't remember, from the police department, who came in. The law actually also specifies that there is a fine to the parents for underage THC. It's a hundred dollars, but if the parents don't pay it, it goes to a thousand dollars in a year. Again, we're not interested in getting any money out of people, but along with that fine, goes a drug education program that the students are required to complete. And we're working with APD to provide that to the students. If you complete that program, mom and dad don't have to pay the hundred dollars. So that's a pretty good incentive on both parts. And there's a whole number of other steps in terms of doing a drug risk evaluation with our folks, working with people. And we're, we're working, you know, we used to have a program that was called Jive Turkeys, the kids named it, back when smoking marijuana was more of an issue in the school. And it was a drug use and risk reduction model where kids would get together in a group. That went away because we didn't really have a cohort of students who were both interested, and we didn't have so many students that were involved. We may move again in those sorts of directions. We're working on sort of figuring out what the modality's gonna be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Morgan?
I know that Mr. Dingman isn't here, the suspension numbers from Dallin seemed- I know that Mr. Dingman isn't here, the suspension numbers from Dallin seemed like numbers, that I was surprised, like, I was surprised that there would be four. It's hard to talk about without getting into specifics, but is there, like, can we get any sense of, like, yeah, what's, are these, was this one incident? Was this, like, you know, it seems, it was four, it was four separate students and four separate suspensions. So, we at least don't have elementary school students who are being suspended more than once, which is good, but it stood out.
We don't, we rarely have suspensions at the elementary level. These were two separate incidents. I think that they were unique, and I think it probably better, I don't know, talk about what they were.
Yeah, no, no, agreed. All right.
Thank you.
Dr. Seitz?
So, in the past, we've seen, I actually like to get an updated report with this information, we've seen information about in-school suspensions, and we've seen information about how long the suspensions are, which I think is really valuable for us to know. So, because there's a difference between a one-day suspension and a two-week suspension. So, if we get that update, I also think that we should update the breakdown, which is very confusing here, percent of population, right? I mean, so it just doesn't make any sense to get some more-
Do you have the thing that-
No, no, on the, on the thing that's available to the public, so that, because I'm getting, I'm getting emails from the public asking me about this. And my response was, I think the math is just wrong. Like, there's just something weird going on here. It doesn't make any sense. I think I understand what you did here, but it just, it's not how you'd normally think about the issue. So, I'd love to see those two things. I'm heartened by how you're talking about suspensions. A few years ago, there was a lot of talk about how suspensions were really important to send a message to the community, and there was less talk about how devastating it can be for an individual student. And I'm heartened that you're talking that way, that you're really sort of recognizing that, that suspension can sort of set, snowball. That oftentimes, the school is a very stable part of kids' lives, especially kids who are struggling with things. And then, to remove them from that stable environment can be really devastating. So, I'm heartened that there is sort of a much more rhetoric and thought and concern about those issues.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you very much. This has been really helpful.
Can I just ask a question? So, just to clarify, those were my numbers that-
Right.
Went out was the raw numbers, not my report. So, but when you're asking for a clarification of the numbers, do you mean-
Oh, no, I think on the one that-
Right, you mean numbers like the ones I just-
Yeah, exactly, right, the one that makes sense.
That was the intent.
Right, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Morgan.
Can, if you do that, can you just give a really clear definition of, like, what the headers?
I won't give you all those columns. That's all the calculation. I'll simplify it a little bit, but yes, I can do that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the columns are, I'm okay with the columns, but like, I think it needs to be really clear, like, what, what percent of sub-population means. I mean, I know what that means, but like, it's got to be.
Well, it can actually be this one, percent of population, to most people reading that, looks like, oh, how many, what percentage are African-American, what percentage are Asian kids, et cetera, right? And, but then, we get these weird numbers. Yeah.
The numbers that are there are your likelihood of being suspended, given what ethnic group you are a part of.
Not the numbers on the Novus thing. You're talking about the, your numbers.
No, no, the number that's up there is, so-
No.
It's something like half of a percent of white students or something. I can't remember what the numbers.
No, because 0.39% of African-American-
Are they just wrong?
They're just wrong.
Completely wrong.
Okay.
It just makes zero sense.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
I think that the numbers in the Novus presentation that we had in the PDF were what percentage of the overall population of Arlington students, those particular suspensions represented, which of course, if there's seven, it's going to be a lower percentage than if it was 13. Like, it doesn't, like, there's no story there, right?
I will tell you that I had not seen that when it went out.
Yeah, okay.
And people sent me calculations, and I was like, what are you calculating?
Mr. Feilman.
Just, just one point. I mean, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not seeing, I don't think we have a suspension problem. I don't think we're suspending a lot of kids in the Arlington Public Schools compared to other schools that I've worked in, seen, been a part of. I mean, from your experience in other schools, how does this compare? I'm just curious. Based on-
I think it, I think it varies. When I was at one school district, I think we suspended a lot of kids, and I think that was almost the expectation of that particular school district, was if a kid misbehaved, he went home. And it was mostly he's. And the, the kind of theory at the time was that if the particular student was a problem, it was usually seen as something that the parents needed to be inconvenienced, and needed to pick up their kid, and they needed to solve it. Almost kind of the, the theory was, you know, if, if you had been suspended, maybe your worst day was when your mom or dad came to pick you up, and you had learned the message not to ever be suspended again. I don't think that worked, but I would say that was much more prevalent in one of the districts that I worked in. You know, every district, I think, since that time, has changed. The law changed, and people complied. There was a lot more documentation, there was a lot more parent involvement. I think it was a very positive step. I think there are some schools that, you know, are much smaller, and just in their, their scale, don't have as many suspensions that we have, because things are really dealt with, because it's a real small community. But when I look at these numbers for places that I've worked at before, I really don't think we're suspending a lot of kids. I think the kids that are suspended, we're trying to be thoughtful about it. And one of the things I hope would be said is, if I met with the parents of a kid who was suspended, they would understand why I did that, and how hopefully the student can learn, and how I could work with those parents. So, the days, I hope, are over where we suspend someone, say, take your kid out here, this is punishment, they need to behave. I would like to think those days are over. There are some things that we are going to have to suspend kids from, and hopefully, we work with the parents. And for, for many of those reasons, when we do suspend kids, we're, you know, we're offering counseling, we're giving them outside places to call, like, we want the kids to learn. And sometimes, it, it does involve suspension, and, you know, hopefully, the kids do learn.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I, I mean, I guess what I would say is this. In a school of almost 1,400 students, a comparably sized school there, we had 42, 42 kids, right? Who, whose behavior got to the point that it required us to put them out of school. That represents a very good discipline environment, right? I mean, this is a school where one staff person eating popcorn can quite happily run the cafeteria with 400 kids in it, and nothing happens in the cafeteria, except for that table over there doesn't pick up their trash. But other than that, it's really pretty mild. The same, at the same point, our goal is to have 100% of our kids successfully navigate school. And for those 42 kids, getting to that point is a bad sign, and something we want to get rid of. And when I look at these numbers, I think, we're not going to get it to zero. Like, students come to our door, we've never met before, we have kids who come, and a week, within a week of their arriving, before we've even gotten a chance to know them, they come in high, and I don't know what we're supposed to do about that, but start over again. But we can knock these numbers down, and I think if we work at it, we can. And I think we need to look at, with fairness, like, I mean, when you think about the fact that, you know, that is the experience of a large proportion of some subsets of our population, that's problematic. That's going to affect them and their friends in ways that are significant. And we really need to be at least speaking to it and aware of it. So, you know, yes, I don't think we have a discipline problem, but I think suspension is something we want to work on.
Great. Thank you very much. So, at this point, I'd like to call people, not you, I'm sorry, I'd like to call the people who are waiting for public participation. You can come up to the mic. You'll have three minutes to, to present your thoughts. We don't, this is our normal public participation, where we don't respond to your comments, we listen to what you have to say. And so, I start with Rajiv Sonaja.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry if I mispronounce anyone's names.
That's fine. Hi, my name is Rajiv Sonaja. I'm a parent of a sixth grader who attends the Gibbs School. And this presentation by the two principals was very, it was like a wake-up call for myself. I saw the agenda posted on the Facebook group, and I saw the rates of suspension and how they are separated by ethnicities. So, I applaud the work that is being done by the school district to address the problem of, the issue of diversities and racial disparities in terms of how this issue is addressed. And also, like you mentioned, the issue is not just pertaining to suspensions, but it is across the board about, about grades and about how students navigate the school system. And it depends a lot on the ethnicity of the student in question. So, some of us parents have been talking about these issues over the last few months. We have formed various diversity and inclusion committees to talk about how, as parents, as concerned parents who want these things to improve, get better, can help with the school system to help alleviate these issues. So, some parents have formed, in conjunction with principals at the individual elementary schools, the diversity and inclusion, parent advisory groups that hopefully can work with the principal to help not just be reactive, but also be proactive to tackle some of these difficult issues. So, my point here was, as some of the other parents as well, in terms of trying to propose to the school committee, or to the district, how we could do a coherent and a cohesive way to address these issues at the district level, so that everybody's working in conjunction with each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynette Martin?
First of all, I would like to commend the district on taking a close look at this. Principal Jenga, for his responsiveness this week, as parents asked questions about the slides. And I was very impressed with the presentation. Very happy to hear about some of the programs that we're looking at and that seem to be working. There was talk towards the end about Arlington having very low discipline rates compared to other districts, which is great, but I don't want to take away from the focus from the fact that we're still, there's still a disparity of seven times for our black children versus white children. And we need to continue to figure out sort of how to get at that number and get that down. I'm also concerned that the burden not be put on the parents to deal with some of these issues, both discipline issues and also sort of other microaggressions that happen in the school. Parents have come to me with stories where they go to someone, and then they're told, like, oh, you need to go to the teacher directly, or you need to do this. And we don't want to put the burden on the parents. I fear that one of the reasons why there's this disparity is because, again, from specific stories I hear directly from parents, there's cultural issues. In particular, I was talking to an Asian parent whose child was suspended, in my opinion, for not good reasons. And I encourage them to go talk and advocate for their child in themselves, but it's not the culture to sort of, to, to go to an administrator and push that topic. So, there can be cultural issues. Also, some of our parents aren't in town, and/or there can be socioeconomic issues where parents don't have the time, that a parent like me seems to be able to find lately, to, you know, put towards these things. It's very time-consuming, so we have to make sure that we're taking care of the kids in the classroom. Also, hope that we're looking at outlying schools, making sure that our social workers are getting all of this training across all the schools, and looking at development of our students over time. There are kids that we see are problematic from the beginning, everybody knows that there's a problem, and I feel like sometimes they get pushed through because we don't have the resources, or we don't find the time and resources to properly address these students' needs. So, I want to make sure that we're looking at problems as they develop from a young age and figure out. So, when Dr. Jenga spoke about, like, looking and doing the same analytical analysis of other forms that are not just suspension, I feel like that is super key and important. And are we looking at communities that are having the success? It seems that racial disparity is less, the racial disparity in suspension rates is less at schools where there's less disparity among the children. So, this has implications for hiring teachers and staff of color, making sure that happens. And then, lastly, I would just like to advocate, and there'll be more on this, for our school committee to consider creating a subcommittee for diversity and inclusion issues specifically. Currently, it falls under the curriculum committee, but the curriculum committee has lots to do and lots of things to focus on. And it would be great for parents to have a forum where they can go and engage with the school committee and the district on issues that matter to us about diversity and inclusion, such as hiring, discipline rates, curriculum. So, now that we have this growing cohort of engaged parents in this issue, I would really love to advocate for a place where there's dedicated focus on that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Christina Fontanaz?
Hi, my name is Christina Fontanaz. I have a third grader at Brackett and a rising kindergartner at Brackett. So, I'm, first of all, I want to thank Dr. Jenga and their principal for the presentation. I did see the earlier version and had lots of questions about it, so I was heartened to see the updates that were made. And even more excited to hear about all of the ongoing programs that are happening at the high school level, such as collaborative problem-solving, which I didn't know about because I have elementary schoolers, that are other kind of diversionary tactics towards school suspensions. And also, just to hear it said out loud, recognition that Arlington is not immune from the national trends. And in some ways, the data that we saw today indicates that we're actually doing a little worse than the national trend. And so, you know, having that out there, awareness about it, I think is important. So, given that we're not immune, I want to echo what Dr. Jenga said, that what we're seeing might be a canary in the coal mine. And, you know, I come from a scientific background, so what I would suggest is that we should collect as much data as possible at finer resolution, especially at the elementary schools. So, my understanding is that the data we saw indicates that the other elementary schools didn't have any suspensions. And that's my understanding, in Brackett in particular, having spoken to the principal. But that doesn't mean there might not be disparities in other forms of discipline. And so, what I would ask is that there is a kind of, not committee, but conversation had about whether we could, across the district, start collecting data at the elementary school level about other forms of discipline. And I don't know if that's visits to the principal's office, if it's even as fine-grained as think sheets, I'm not sure if we're all aware, I'm sure you've had students that have gone through these types of discipline. But I think it would be helpful to understand the extent of this issue that we're seeing, given that this is probably the tip of an iceberg. And also, I was excited to hear about that professional development has included implicit bias training. I think that's wonderful. And what I would suggest is that this should be an ongoing thing, perhaps annually, so that, because we have to recognize that, you know, go to one training and then you know it forever. Especially as the student population changes, our teachers should be prepared for that. And so, the last question I would have, and I think it kind of speaks to the drug policy in general, and I know that you can't tell us some levels of detail, but I wondered whether black students were disproportionately impacted by the drug policy, and whether that should cause us to reconsider the type of discipline that we are meeting out for that specific thing, given that impact. I don't know that's, that's the case, it's a question. And finally, I want to echo what Lynette said about having a subcommittee specifically for diversity and inclusion, because there is this growing group of parents that are really engaged and would love to have district-level interactions about it on a more regular basis. Although, I should say that the principals, in general, have been extremely supportive at all of the schools to having these conversations. And so, I think a subcommittee would be warranted, given that enthusiasm and parent engagement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mia Castella? Okay. Sarah Evans?
My name is Sarah Evans. I have a fifth grader at Hardy Elementary. And I wanted to touch on two things. First, to say that while the number of suspensions, I think the conversation should shift a little bit from how many suspensions do we have to what is the makeup of those suspensions. And I think the fact that the minority students are, the numbers that I saw, if you add them up, are the same as the majority white students. So I think that that's an issue that really needs to be, you know, investigated and figured out why that is and what can be done to help those children. As a mom of a brown son, you know, I looked at the numbers and it wasn't encouraging as a member of this community and someone who wants to stay here and who would like to stop, honestly, putting my name in for the lottery at Prospect Hill Academy, because I do think about this. You know, what is my son, you know, what is his going to experience going to be like when he's in high school? And then I thought, as a parent, I could speak to what I saw when I looked at this data. I'm a visual journalist. I'm a managing editor of visual content at a tech company that funnels a lot of data. And one of the things that we talk about with the data scientist is that raw data, when you look at it, it's like being in a very noisy party. You know, you've got a, you can't hear anything. You don't really know what's going on. It looks interesting, but what is it, what is it being, you know, what's being said? And one of the challenges that we face when trying to help our audiences is to inform them and help guide them through the data. And I'll give just a couple of examples that confused me, and I'm pretty good at data. It's what I do. A lot of what I do throughout the day and discussions we have at work. I think that, in terms of a parent, the reason this is important is that I can totally help you. I mean, I don't necessarily want to come to all the meetings or, you know, hold hands or like email you, but I can help you when I'm talking to other parents, when we're talking about our kids, when we're talking about what's going to be important and what are we going to talk about with our kids. And I think even knowing there was a slide about vandalism, which had as many suspensions or fence types as drugs and, you know, what, just having some information there. I think sometimes with raw data, people feel like if we tell a story, we are somehow not being objective. When I think when you inform a perspective for people as to how they should start looking at the data, it's a helpful first step for people to say at their homes, what can I do? Because some of this data freaks me out. So I think that that could be very helpful in just presenting this, perhaps not presenting raw data, but presenting data with some storytelling context so that we know how you're interpreting the data. Because that's important, because you guys are the experts and you see this data and you understand the global kind of perspective here in the Arlington district. So I also think it was slightly confusing, just things like the number of suspensions was 49. The number of students suspending was 42 on the face of it. It took me a little bit of time to figure that out, busy day. So I think just even some context, you know, that says, hey, some kids are, you know, expelled more than, you know, once at a time, that kind of information is helpful. And then also, there were some other, a couple of other things in terms of just the raw data. So I just encourage you, because I, we, you know, as the other parents have said, we, you know, we are very interested in helping this community be better. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that's the end of public participation at this point. And, yes? Okay, sure. Just give your name when you come up, please.
Hi, my name is Mara Vats. I'm a parent of a first grader in the Thompson District. And I've been a high school teacher for eight years. And one of my concerns is whether suspensions are affecting certain groups long-term differently than others. So for example, if I have an A student who misses a couple of days of class, they might go down to an A minus. If I have a C student who misses a few days of class, they're going to go down to a D. So one of my, one of the things that I hope would be looked into is not only the racial disparity in the suspension rates, but also the long-term consequences of being suspended for different groups. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this, yes? Um, yeah, that's fine.
Hi, my name is Lisa Reynolds and I have a son at Arlington High School and a daughter at Odyssean in eighth grade. And I would really like the committee to consider changing their cellphone use policy in schools, in school, because cellphones are a big distraction for kids and it's interfering with their education. And it also, you know, ties into bullying and there's a lot of studies that show that cellphone use is, even if the cellphone is not on and they're not actively using it, even if it's in the backpack next to them, it's a big distraction. And I have had to take my son's cellphone from him because he was in like freshman seminar or his study classes and instead of studying, he would be on the cellphone. So it was difficult for me to take it away from him because he says, oh, sometimes we need it in class and all the other kids have one. And so it makes it really difficult. And I don't think that cellphones have any place in the classrooms. They're a huge distraction. And can you imagine having, like when we were going to school, can you imagine having the phone that you had in your home, on your desk, with a little TV? And also a readout that had your friend's information and everything right there? That is a really big distraction. And so I hope you can consider changing that. So maybe the kids put their cellphones in their locker in the morning and they pick it up at the end of school, at the end of the day. And then I think teachers don't have to worry about all the distractions and problems that come along with cellphones. And while I have a little bit more time, I was wondering also if you could also consider, please, giving the kids keyboard instruction. We start putting computers in front of them in, I guess it's middle school, and we don't give them any instruction on how to properly use that keyboard. We, you know, when we give a kid a pen or a pencil in kindergarten, we teach them how to correctly hold that instrument and use it. But we don't give them any instruction on how to use the keyboard. I have a son who has dysgraphia. It's particularly hard for him to write. So everyone keeps pushing him to, oh, just use the computer, use the computer, it's such a great tool. But if he has to keep looking back and forth, it's very, very difficult for him. And that could be a really great tool, but there's no, we've had a little bit of instruction in middle school, but it was kind of just, you know, very, kind of just a little bit too little and not enough. These kids need to be all together learning it. And so I really, I really think it's a really important skill that these kids need going forward, especially since most jobs, you know, require, you know, keyboard use. And it's important. I think we're leaving that out of their education. And one other very quick thing regarding what was on here before. I wish that maybe when you look at those numbers about in-school suspensions, if you could look and see which kids have IEPs. Do they have a lot of, you know, unsolved problems and lagging skills? Is that why they're ending up suspended? And then one more small point is when you suspend, when you do in-school suspension, I think it borders on cruel when you put a kid in a class, in a room all by himself for the whole day. I think it borders on cruel and should be reconsidered on what you do. Maybe they get extra community service or something like that, but putting them in a room all by themselves for an entire day is not advisable, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, we're going to move on to, okay, the Program of Studies. Mr. McCarthy?
Good evening, everyone. Before everyone arrived, I put a flyer on everyone's desk detailing the Program of Studies. I met earlier, excuse me, I think it was last Thursday. I spent many, too many nights in this room as it is. I think it was last Thursday, meeting with the, correct me if I'm wrong, Curriculum and Policy Committee to take a look at this. We've made the updates that were requested from that committee. So I'll just take a quick walkthrough, if everyone is okay with that, of some of the courses that we're excited about offering next year. We've got a lot of expansion in the Art Department next year with Art and Technology, which will be merging our woodworking and sculpture classes with technology and programming. Ceramic, sculpture, and pottery is expanding, along with adding Drawing 1 and 2. And Sculptural and Functional Woodworking, which will be replacing WoodTech. In terms of athletics, no, athletics, I'm sorry, PE will be adding athletic training, where students will be working with a certified trainer to understand the basics of how a trainer completes their job and get some basic training around that. We'll also be adding basic physical self-defense. Listed here is RAD. That should be removed. It'll be Basics of Physical Defense. That's in connection with the Arlington Police Department. Social Studies will be expanding, offering an AP Human Geography course starting at grade 10, as well as several economics classes. The Economics of Personal Finance, Introduction to Economics, Participation in Government Public Policy, and Social History Through Sports. One thing to note on this list, Advanced Placement Physics 3, that's a typo and should be removed. It's actually the last course, AP Physics C, Mechanical. And there's also one other change from when I originally met with the committee, and that is a course that we originally titled Python will be updated to be Artificial Intelligence with Python. Hopefully, the robots won't take over the school next year. I didn't know if anyone had any questions about the specifics of the courses. Bill? Oh, sorry.
I assume that the new public policy is replacing the old public policy that you listed above as being removed?
Yes.
Because it makes me real nervous after having that great presentation tonight. I grabbed onto the first one, it said removed, and then I, I don't know, what's the difference?
Well, the goal is to actually rotate them through. So one will be offered one year, one will be offered the next year.
Okay.
And so juniors-
Does it be a graduation requirement or?
It's not a graduation requirement. We're still growing the number of students that want to take it. It's also, the biggest piece is being able to rotate it through so that it doesn't stagnate. We want to be able to offer it so a junior could take one course and then take the next course their senior year or reverse that.
Similar to removing the two Economics and adding the new Economics?
Yep. That's just a change in terms of the course offerings. We offered Economics for Life two years ago. We've revisited the curriculum, rewritten it, and now it's Personal Finance.
And the Fabrication Lab and the Archaeology, just lack of interest or?
Archaeology, we actually retired that course two years ago at the last-minute retirement of, or not retirement, resignation of our teacher who was teaching archaeology. We didn't have anyone certified to teach it.
So the front lawn won't be dug up on a regular basis?
Hopefully, it'll be dug up a lot after we pass the budget with the building.
It took an enormous amount of talent to make digging on the lawn and finding very little constructive. They did an amazing job, but we didn't have anyone to teach it.
And then in regards to the Fabrication Lab, we've actually, with the hiring of a Makerspace teacher, Nathan Muelinson, who does an amazing job, the Fabrication course has been absorbed by him. And he'll be teaching several of the course, the new offerings, to get students involved in the woodworking and-
So for the most part, these programs are, have a new face rather than disappearing?
Yes. All the ones, with the exception of Pep Band, which just didn't have the interest, have all taken on a new form, and Introduction to Archaeology, which, if eventually we have a staff member who's certified and wants to do that, we'd be happy to reopen that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just have one question. For the courses which you're alternating, do we have to withdraw them each year? Can we just have something after them saying, this is not offered in this year? So that, but we expect it to be offered, you know, every other year or something?
We do that-
So that kids know that it's, you know, like I have an incoming ninth grader, so she could look at it and go, okay, I know this is coming.
We do have that listed in the proper Program of Studies. This is just the highlights, and so I wanted to say what courses were not being offered. But we do have that, those course descriptions are in the Program of Studies and it does say will be offered again in the year of 2021.
Okay, so removed doesn't mean it's not in the Program of Studies, just that you're not offering it next year.
Exactly.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Is this, the document that we got tonight is not the one that was in Novus? Or at least it's not the one that was in Novus like 36 hours ago? So, or even a few hours, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not.
This has been updated since the meeting that I had with the Policy Committee. And so I submitted, I submitted, the version you have, I submitted, I think, two weeks ago.
The version we have here, printed?
I thought this afternoon is when ours could put together, so it's slightly different.
So can we just make, because there were pieces about the homeschool policy that were, that are in the public version on Novus that now aren't this? So can we like make all that?
Right. I think there's been staffing issues, why some of this stuff got done earlier and it was done anyway. We're going to fix that. So, yeah, that will be taken down because it wasn't intended. It's not the correct information.
Oh, just to that matter, so in the written version, it says specifically, this means a student, this is on the policy for homeschools. Is there something cut out, maybe?
Yeah, I'm looking at now.
Okay, so that's just cut out. Oh, every other page is cut out.
It looks like the-
Oh, there's other things cut out apparently.
When it printed, it printed front and back and I didn't realize that's when it photocopyed.
Okay, got it.
It didn't photocopy front and back, so it's actually-
So we're confused, but it's all just logistical stuff.
Yes, I apologize for that.
Thanks.
I can resubmit that, so it's published correctly. On our scheduling website with the high school, this is the version that is up there in draft format. So I'll send that to Karen Fitzgerald to get that updated in your systems. I apologize for that oversight.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to approve the Program of Studies? Please, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passive human matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So at this point, we move on to the monthly financial report. Mr. Mason?
Tonight, you have in front of you in Novus, the monthly financial reports for December 2018. It's a cumulative report for the general fund grants and revolving funds up to the month of December. This report is prepared usually by Liz Montez and the Business Office. The format has not changed, so it's something that you're familiar with. And the general, the general fund report shows the revised budget amount next to with the actual expenditures to date, in addition to the encumbrances and in what we are projecting for encumbrances or expenditures. Those numbers represent expenses that we are projecting, that we may know at this point, as well as items that are plugs to make sure that we hold for certain expenditures, such as tuition and whatnot that may happen throughout the year. So overall, we're projecting on the general fund that we will not be in a shortfall and we have about $3.6 million of projected encumbrances. The Grant and Revolving Funds Reports, they are showing expenditures and revenues as we have projected or expected, and we are collecting revenues in a timely manner in regards to that. You have any questions in regards to the reports in front of you?
Mr. Heiner?
Down the line, 81414 and 415, the longevity, this is an annual thing that I have. In my mind, the only thing, it should never be in a negative. It might be in a positive if somebody retires at the beginning of the year. We know exactly, we should know exactly who is entitled to this. It's gone down dramatically. I realize it's a little more than $9,000. It's not a big pinch in the bucket, but in my mind, this should never be a negative. Could be a positive again, I'm going to repeat it, if somebody retires in the middle of the year. This is not against-
It's not against you or anything. It's, at one point, it was like $40,000, so it's, so I don't know if you have a response to that, or what?
Oh, no, I, I do agree. I think, you know, working on the FY '20 budget will try to true up where the lines, uh, in terms of accurate expenditures. It seems at this point, working with John, that, you know, all of the longevity has hit, so there's some, there's an overage that's still showing a projected encumbrance on this report, which would cover the other, other longevity lines. So there's no real deficits in those counts.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden?
Thanks, um, so just, uh, more of a comment, as you're putting together the, the budget, John, I think, was going to do this, but not sure if it's done yet. The, um, you know, some of the revolving funds were running over what we expected already, like for, uh, the Bishop Bus and the, I think the other one was the preschool. And some are running significantly under, I don't know, you know, it's not, not quite time to say we're going to run short in some of them, but, um, for assumptions in the budget, we should be looking at our, our year-to-date activity and seeing if we need to adjust our projections, uh, for the next year's budget, particularly where we're running over already. We may, we may need, we may need to increase those amounts. And if you're expecting a shortfall, uh, like athletic fees and, and a lot of them are running quite low halfway through the year, make those adjustments as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any further questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Um, and now we move on to Superintendent Report.
All right, I actually have, um, quite a few things. Rob, could you turn the, the screen on for a couple of things later on? But I want to begin by, um, first of all, thanking our custodians and DPW. This, this last, um, weekend was very difficult, um, for them in terms of clearing the schools, and they did an incredible job. I was touring the schools on Monday, and I know they had been dealing with about an inch and a half to two inches of, of ice that they had to chop through. Um, well, tonight, unfortunately, I think we're going to see the end of the ice on the sidewalk for the moment, but I, I do want to, I do want to acknowledge them and DPW for really, really going, uh, all out to make sure that schools could open on time. The, um, you know, this, this event, I, I mentioned in email to parents, but I do want to say this again, is that, you know, we make the best decision we can, based on the information we have about the weather, the conditions at the school, what everybody is thinking is it could work, uh, the best, uh, for, uh, students coming into school safely. But that doesn't mean that some parents might think that it is not safe for their, their child to walk, or for them to even drive. And they need, they certainly have that right to make that decision. They just need to call the school, and as we have done in past years, it's, it's still an absence, uh, but it can be excused absence. Um, in the high schools, it works a little bit differently, I don't want to get into all the details and that, but they have, they have a system, but if, if, if it was necessary, and this was one of the reasons it took them over a number on a particular term, that would not be an issue. I wish that Dr. Jenga was here, we were talking about this, because he could talk a little bit more about that. So anyway, with that, I just want to, um, to tell parents to remember that, and next time I send an email, I will let them know again.
Mr. Carden?
Um, so one, one comment that I heard was, heard was, um, with, with not having a delay was, not only was there some possible safety issues that may or may not have been cleared up in two hours, probably not, would, probably wouldn't have been much different in two hours, but the fact that all the roads were so narrow, um, the traffic was incredible, and, and the stress on people trying to get to school on time, um, you know, they were just, they were just stressed out sitting there on Mass Ave for, you know, twenty minutes to go two miles. So, um, yes, safety is the prime factor, but in your talks with Mr. Radamacher, you know, whether, whether there's going to be enormous traffic issues might be something else to consider.
Mr. Schmuck?
Well, that traffic issue is more than just the snow, there's a water main break on Chestnut Street, which just blocked up the entire center, which was not, uh, direct, it was a direct cause of the cold, but it certainly wasn't a weather-related thing that you could have predicted by going around at 6:00 AM and taking a look around. Because that's about when the, uh, water main broke, it, it was around the corner from our house, and we didn't have water for a while, but, uh, yeah, I, I mean, you never, you, you never get these right 100% of the time. Uh, when I drove past a couple of the schools on Monday, I mean, I was very impressed with the work that had been done. So, you know, i- if, if it's a problem, and you have to come in late on a, on a really iffy day, get the excuse. If you don't think it's safe to make it in, get the excuse. Uh, we're going to try to do what's best, predicting it out at five o'clock, and no later than five o'clock that, that morning, and, uh, you know, sometimes, uh, the weather doesn't align, or the DPW doesn't align, but I appreciate the, um, the problem of, uh, of predicting this and, and getting, uh, schools started on Tuesday.
Ms. Morgan?
Um, I get all the emails from all of the elementary schools, and the email from Dallin about the, like, parking, drop-off, pickup was exceptionally well-done, very clear, very, like, straightforward about what his concerns were, what to avoid, so, very well-done.
I'd just point out that you can keep your student home, or you can just delay their arrival. And, and that would be an excuse, too, and so that, I mean, I've told my children that when they're walking, it's more important to me that they get there safely than get there on time, you know, and will work it out later, so.
Okay. All right, um, where to start? Well, another, um, information I want to give you has to do with kindergarten registration. We opened the, um, online registration this week, and we have gone about it a little bit differently this year. We have a generation of parents who would prefer to have information come to them electronically, and that's what we tried to do this year, both with emails out to our parents, emails to the preschool, notices on, uh, on the town, um, system. And we also this year sent out hard copy letters to, um, people in buffer zones. But what's interesting is that we actually received a large number of buffer zone fam, people who live in buffer zones, even prior to when they got the letter. Uh, so that was very interesting. That means that we're being very successful in getting the word out about kindergarten registration. And our hope is by moving it back this year, that we can avoid parents having the uncertainty of which after-school program to be in. And our after-school program's been asked not to make kindergarten assignments, certainly until after the, the first week in February. So, so far, so, uh, it's going well. I don't, this is, just after the first couple of days, we have, uh, over 150 registrations, of which about a third of those are the buffer zone, um, students that, that live in buffer zones. So we'll see. It's hard to know from the first couple of days what our kindergarten registrations will be. Um, our own internal predictions are somewhere over 500 again this year, but probably not as high as, you know, 585, where we are this year. But it, one of the things that I also can give parents, and we're going to send out confirming, um, emails about this, this, uh, probably another week or so, is that we've already scheduled the times that we're going to have parents come into the schools, uh, to meet teachers. This is not, this is not with children, and that, um, meeting is at, uh, May 22nd at 8:30 in the morning. We also have a date for students that are going to come in with their parents in it, on a Tuesday afternoon, that's May 28th at 1:30, so that they can have a chance to just see the kindergartens, get to see, get to meet all of the kindergarten teachers. And all that information will go out again, and probably again, uh, as, as we go through the spring. And, as well as more information about screening that will take place, um, toward the very end of June, the last two full days of school. So, moving on, um, a quick report on Hardy. I was over there just the, just yesterday. It seems like longer than that, but this, just yesterday, and the move has all taken place. All of the classes are already set up in the classrooms. Um, I think one of the things we were wondering is how the, the soundproofing in the music room was going to work, and it's working great. Uh, that was a concern, but it's fine. We haven't done the fifth grade drumming yet, so we'll see how that works. But, um, they're, they're, they're very happy. They're very, very happy about these, these new rooms. So, moving on, um, I want to talk about what's going on with the high school. So, I don't know, Rob, can you put that? We had a building committee meeting, pardon?
The options, or the?
Yes. We had a building committee meeting this week, uh, and there were a couple of, of, um, issues that were discussed. One is the external facade for the high school. There were four options that were given, and- Can that back, can that, well, this is the option number two, which the building committee directed the architects to move forward with in terms of, um, more, more detail about it, with, with some caveats of having the, the top part of the entrance actually be a little bit more like option four, if that, if you can scroll down to that, yeah, so.
What's that?
Yeah.
That was the vote.
That was the vote, to move forward.
To make two more like four?
No.
The top of the center.
But this more, this is just, it's still in the early stages of, of this. What we, we do know is that as we move forward in this process, we are going to have to get a design that's a little bit more detailed, um, honestly, for the override. We have to have a vision of what the school's going to look like. Probably not just the, the front facade, but the, but, uh, views of the high school from, uh, different angles, particularly the back, because you're going to see the back of the high school, obviously from the fields and from Summer Street. So, this is the, the direction. Uh, there was, um, the committee did just, did, uh, consider a more, a more replica of column, and if you go back to option number one, this was not a unanimous vote, I will say that, to move forward with number two. If you can go back one to option one. Oh, it's not in there?
It's on there. It might be a different power, which, um-
Oh, all right. I, I can't read what's on that. At, at any rate, it wa, there wa, it was the majority voted to move forward with option two. Option one had a little bit more, um, of a look of the column house. Anyway, another important decision that was made, um, on, on Tuesday evening, uh, from the building committee, was the issue of the preschool, uh, in Parterre, and also the district offices. There was, um, we will, I think, I don't know if this is quite on the website yet, but basically, they looked at, initially, the building committee asked our architectural firm to look at three things, a temporary location and feasibility of the preschool being at Parterre. That should be up there. Yeah. A temper, a, a permanent move of the preschool to Parterre, and then a permanent move of the district offices to Parterre. It wasn't clear until they did the study as to whether the preschool could fit. Right now, the pre, the Parterre has, the International School has left, but the back part of the building is the Arlington Children's Center, ACC. And so this was done with, um, the, the temporary was looked at in terms of just having the front part of Parterre, the part that's not occupied by ACC. And yes, it could fit, uh, for, on a temporary basis, the classrooms would be very small. We would be able to bring the preschool classroom from Pierce to Parterre. But the classrooms would be somewhat undersized, but for the purpose, if it's, if it's considered temporary, that would be acceptable. Now, when you take a look at a permanent solution for the preschool at Parterre, in that situation, we would be needing to look at larger classroom spaces and to replicate the, the projection of needing nine classrooms down the road. When the architectural firm looked at that, no matter how, even with ACC space, they could only get eight classrooms, because there's other, uh, class, other spaces you need to have with the preschool, but there was no other way to get contiguous space for the nine classrooms. So a question came to me, is what would you do if it was a permanent situation? What would you do if you needed that ninth classroom? And we'd have to do what we're doing presently, and that is have an, a preschool class out of the preschool in, in one of our elementary. But the, the key thing for the building committee was what are the costs associated with this? And this is the analysis. And this is taking in, having it really apples to apples in terms of all the, the soft costs as well, because, uh, having construction cost to construction cost. If the, uh, if the preschool, uh, was relocated to, um, if there's a permanent relocation of the preschool to Parterre, the cost would be about $11 million. And in that situation, in or, if there was going to be a permanent move of Parterre, what that would mean is that ACC would have to have a notice in June that we were going to break the lease, because you would need the, you would need that year to be able to prepare the, the building for the permanent use of the preschool. And so there would be a loss of income from ACC, not to mention, maybe even more importantly, the loss of the programming, because in this town, having preschool options is very, very hard, um, and it's been there for 30 years. So this was, this would be a major shift, and very short notice, I might add, because this would be a, a June notification. But so the total cost, combining with the lost income, would be, uh, basically about $11.4 million. Now, if you were to have the preschool in the new high school building, which is the last column, it would be $11.2 million. But you still have to have swing space, and so the cost of swing space would be about $2.3 million. That includes having an elevator at Parterre, uh, for access for, uh, other programming, as well as a lot of upgrades in mechanicals, furnace, windows. There'd be a lot of upgrades to Parterre, which brings then the effective cost to 13 million point, uh, 13.5 million. So the building committee looked at this, it is, it is more expensive to, with, with swing space to have it be at the high school. That, this was looking at, a relook at the numbers, just to make sure we're, you know, looking at this fairly, and, uh, apples to apples.
Can I talk just for a second?
Yes, you can.
These number, in case you're wondering, these numbers are slightly different than what you saw at our last meeting. The reason that they're different is that on review, we realized that some of the numbers that had been presented included soft costs, other numbers did not. So all of these numbers are now without soft costs, um, and are directly comparable. Mr. Heiner?
But aren't some of the soft costs going to still exist whether?
Yes, oh, will still pay it either way, it's just, the problem was, you can't compare numbers with soft costs to numbers without, because it, it skews the-
Right.
One of the other considerations, if I, if I may? We have, parking's an issue no matter where we go. There, there seems to be a little less over there with that, that playground, uh, whether that's a reality or not. It might alleviate some of the parking issues here if thing, programs go over there, the administration and things of that nature. Um, thank you.
Change. I don't know what the, yes, the recommendations.
Um, so right now, the Parterre is under the auspices of the Select Board as a town. Is there, if we do, I mean, we've got to do, we're going to do something to it, it sounds like, shortly. Will that return back to the school committee, or will it stay with the Select Board? Or do we not know yet?
It would stay with the Select Board.
If we used it for a preschool, the preschool that would come back to us, wouldn't it?
The temporary preschool.
Well, why don't they vote?
No, so the lease is between the select board.
Right, I understand that.
That's not going to change between ACC.
It's irrelevant, it's irrelevant to our call decision.
Right, let Dr. Boddy continue with what the building committee decided.
The building committee looked at these and absolutely correct that there was a little bit of confusion in the numbers because of, some of the numbers before concluded soft costs, but these are strict construction costs in order to compare the two. And yes, it is more expensive to have the preschool built at the high school because of the swing space costs of Parterre. Otherwise, if you didn't include those, they'd really be pretty comparable.
In the construct, the administration in the new building here, you, I think you addressed this the last time I asked, it will be substantially separated, so that the public will not be walking through the academic part?
Yes.
That, to me, is a major concern for security, in my mind.
Great, totally agree. The, how it would be designed in the new building, it would be actually a separate building connected to the Humanities Wing, which is on the field side.
But it would be isolated so that people couldn't...
Separate entrances.
Walk into the academic part of the building.
Separate entrance for the preschool, separate entrance for district offices. And even the connector between the school and all of this will have, be highly monitored and locked. So, construction to construction are the same. What made them different is there's going to have to be an infusion of money to upgrade Parterre. Now, that includes an elevator. The question is, should we have an elevator? That whole issue probably we'll get to discuss some more. The advantage is that that building's going to need upgrading anyway. It's, it was sort of the same situation we had down at Gibbs. We really had to, as a town, put some money into that building, and this was part of the swing cost, which is part of the project cost. Otherwise, down the road, you're going to have to see major money out of the capital budget for this. So, there is, otherwise, if we were to do this not using Parterre, we'd still have to have swing space for the preschool, and that would be modular classrooms if we were to keep it. So, there's going to be a swing space cost, and it is included in the project numbers. Now, another thing that the committee discussed is that if it goes permanently to Parterre, there is no opportunity for reimbursement on the cost of upgrading Parterre, none. If it's, if the preschool is at the high school and part of the project, it's very possible that there would be shared costing, cost sharing with MSBA. We don't have a definitive answer on that, but the possibility is there, where there is not any possibility at Parterre.
Well, we know that, and sufficient time to make an informed decision.
Where?
From MSB, the reimbursement aspect of it.
We made a decision.
Point of order, can we? All right.
The committee, the committee made the decision that this made the most sense, and they have voted to have the preschool be part of the high school project. As far as the reimbursement goes, we will not know that probably till later this spring. But that's not, the committee knew that and did not, that was not the deciding factor.
The reasons, just to go through some of the reasons. One is the preservation of ACC, although that's kind of outside of the school district. Another is the ability to have the size preschool that we need for the population that we anticipate to build, to help build capacity in the high school in terms of potentials for increasing enrollment, even beyond the designing role, or even beyond what we anticipate. To enable the students to have, the students who are interested in early education to have hands-on opportunities to work with the preschoolers as they do today. MSBA reimbursement, I think there was one other, and I'm forgetting.
Well, we would have to have a separate debt exclusion question in June if we went to Parterre. We'd have to have a separate question. So, there'll be three ballot questions, one for the preschool, then operating override, and then debt exclusion for the high school.
The capital budget would not have sufficient funds to do this.
Right.
Anyway, so the building committee did decide that we were going to keep the preschool and the district offices in the high school as part of...
Well, the district office one was an easy decision, because if you look at the construction costs for relocation to Parterre versus being included in the high school project, it would be, relocation would be $7.8 million, whereas being included in the high school project is $5.8. That one was a fairly easy one. In addition to that, if permanent relocation to Parterre, there'd be one of two consequences. One, either we have to spend another million dollars for an extra swing space year, or the preschool has to come back to the high school, their space, a year or so earlier, meaning that they're going to be present on property through the last phases of the high school project. And that, the whole point of having them off-site was to not have them go through the construction process. So, but really, didn't need to go into those layers of argumentation about it, because the numbers are just so clear, that it doesn't make any sense. So, anyway, that's where we are with Parterre, but we wanted to bring this up again today, because there was some relooking at the numbers, just to make sure it was a true apples to apples when we compare them.
Okay, we took a very circuitous route to get where we got. Can you just clarify and restate what the decisions were?
Yes. The decision was to have the preschool go to Parterre on a temporary basis for the duration of the construction project. That will cost, for swing space, roughly in the order of about $2.3 million. That number could change a little bit, probably not much more, but, so that was the decision. And the decision was to have the preschool be part of the high school project. They would move into their space at the conclusion, and that the district offices would be built as part of the high school project. One of the points that Mr. Filman has pointed out is that it gives us also more flexibility with the high school, but more about the district offices than even the preschool.
Okay, I think...
That's it?
Yeah, I think we're good. Mr. Hainer.
Just real quick, the $2.3 million is, there's no reimbursement on that. That, the town has to bite that, am I correct?
All swing space in any project is not reimbursable.
So, where did we get the $2.3?
Part of the high school project monies. It's swing space. So, if we were to, if we were to get modular classrooms, that would be swing space. We don't get reimbursed, but it's part of the project cost.
I understand, thank you.
I mean, one thing, just, you know, when this is done, and AC, I mean, Monomy Preschool moves out of Parterre, there'll be a very nice facility in there that the town can rent. And so, it's going to lead to rental income to the town.
Right, so the only, last thing I want to bring up about where we are is literally where we are in terms of timelines. Next week is going to be a very busy week involving you as well. We're going to be getting cost estimates back on the 29th. A whole day will be spent in, and the cost estimates are done through our architectural firm and through our own as project manager, Skanska. They sit down for a day, and they reconcile those numbers, so we have one set of numbers. Now, we'll see where we are on that on the 29th. This, the committee is meeting on the 30th to just, you know, get a report on this, to talk about if there's any value engineering that we need to do. We just, we'll wait and see where we are. One thing that we know is that we cannot go above that $308 million, and so, should the costs come in higher, then we're going to have to do some reductions. We may be doing some reductions regardless. I mean, that's something we might want, we will all be talking about. So, then, the building committee is going to meet on the 31st. Then, they meet again on the 5th and the 12th with the goal of submitting to MSBA the, our submission on the preferred design and the cost of it on the 20th of February. So, the next month is going to be a very intensive time, and I will say that all of the building committee meetings, as well as this meeting with the school committee on the 30th, are all open meetings for people to come to, to learn more about the project. Do you want to add anything?
Want to see those other slides?
Well, do you want to, you want to show that? Did you find them?
It's just on P, yeah.
Just, you know, the other thing is, all this stuff, most of this stuff is on the, our website.
It's getting there.
Well, it will be, all right.
Yeah, it takes a little bit of time. Now, this, what this is, well, a lot of discussion went on in terms of the...
No. We don't want to go into, we don't want to go into this, no.
Well, this is just about the foot plan, but one of the things that the committee did decide is that we want to make sure that the auditorium is back, which is the red line on the left, and not forward, which would give a more octagonal line to the entrance. Basically, the idea is to try to keep as much of the, yes, that was option one. So, basically, the committee had the architects go forward with option A last, with option A, and give different renditions of it. And so, these were the renditions, and the building committee voted on option, to go forward with more development of option number two. And you might, I don't know if you want to put that back up again? Okay, but you keep going.
Did you?
Option, option two, yeah.
Yeah, there.
Is there a question? Is option two covered? I know some of the things had places you could stand under if it was raining, and some didn't. The main entrance, yeah, yeah.
That seemed to be a given with the committee that you want, you want to, you don't want to, you want to have a place that you can stand under.
Okay, because I know some of the earlier ones didn't necessarily have that, I was just curious. Okay. Okay. Did you want to talk about the governance? We can talk about that. Are you going to talk about it?
Bring committee reports, yeah.
Okay, I'll let you talk about that. But I also want to say that registration for summer fund, there's, I'm going to get this out or is going to get out, sneak preview on it is out, available in terms of all the courses. It's coming out on Valentine's Day.
I'm going to make one comment, just for the committee's sake, about the front design. Yeah, real, because I'll take care of you. Yes, I just, you know, one thing to, for the committee to understand is that in the, one of the things that was said last night that people should understand is that in the center of the front there is, the thing on the top is the D lab, the discourse lab, which where 120 students could gather to have discussions. And once, one person said last night, there's something highly symbolic about that, and that at this point in time, it's important to allow students and staff and other people to have discourse and dialogue, and so, at the center of that will be a place where there's discourse and dialogue taking place, and that is...
Civil.
Civil, civil, civil discourse and dialogue. And, you know, that may be our gift at this moment in time.
And there's a lot of discussion about that. We don't have that now in the school.
No, you don't, no.
I mean, this is the room that's used as much as possible, but this is a really, this is actually going to be a really important room for the high school, very important.
Yeah, very important.
There was some discussions where it should best be, one thing that is clear, we need it by an entrance, and it needs to be in the spine. But this is where it's probably going to end up, is in the front of the building.
Yeah, so people in the community think about every, every day, probably, many times a day, there'll be a lot of discourse and dialogue and debate, healthy debate, civil debate, taking part, taking place in that place.
Okay, so, just quickly, and one last thing, and that is on the Martin Luther King's Annual Celebration. Very impressive how many people came out in the middle of all that ice and extra slush and snow that evening. The reason I'm bringing it up is just to let you know, first of all, it happened, and compliments to the committee that they went forward with this, but a woman who is on my superintendent's advisory committee on diversity, Barbara Bolts, was honored for outstanding achievement. I just thought, I wanted to recognize her. She's been on town meeting for 25 years, she's on this committee, she's also on the Equal Opportunity Advisory Committee and 2020 Diversity Committee, so I want to acknowledge Barbara and congratulate her for that. And I think that is it.
Okay, great, thank you. So, moving on, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be retained and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered as normal sequence. Approval warrant, warrant number 19131 dated for 10, dated 1/10/2019 in the amount of $792,425.06. There are no minutes. Approval of trip, Naga Kyokyo.
Nagaoka Kyo.
What Paul said, Japan for this July 2019. Approval of trip, AHS Performing Arts in New York City, May 17th to 20, 2019.
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions, so that passes unanimously? And now, we go on to subcommittee and liaison reports.
Thanks. So, two things. We had another joint meeting of the budget and the CIA committee to make further progress on the long-range plan, to go over the presentation that we are making available to PTOs. I have a couple that are interested. I'm thinking we may need to sort of consolidate and say, there'll be one at Gibbs, there'll be one at, you know, a couple, a couple other schools, because some of the PTOs are just busy with other things. And so, that's, I think that's mainly what we did at the meeting, right? Yeah. And then, the budget, the governor did release his budget yesterday. He is moving forward on implementation, implementing changes to the foundation budget, which does benefit Arlington for some complicated reasons that I don't fully understand, but basically, because we've, we contribute the maximum amount that we're expected to contribute under the formula to education, whereas some of our neighboring towns, like Winchester, doesn't quite get there yet. And that's partly related to the wealth of the community and other things. That combined with our enrollment growth and the changes that he's making to the formula means that every, every change he makes that increases the amount that should be spent on schools gets funded largely from the state, because we're already putting our share in, so. So, we did benefit nicely from the changes. We're looking to have another budget subcommittee meeting soon to figure out how much of that will roll in, directly into our budget, and how much, you know, what we're going to do going forward with, with the relationship with the town.
Community relations?
Yes, we had a meeting last week, just looking for the date, but on Friday, the 18th. And we discussed sort of what we want to do in terms of outreach for the likely shift to an 8:30 start time at the high school and middle school level, and decided we'd love to hear from the students who are interested in this and want to have a sort of open discussion, by chance, sort of a discussion to hear thoughts, questions, concerns, on the 4th. And then, we discussed the other calendar issues that we had surveyed parents about and decided that we did not get a clear-cut consensus from neither, from either the community or teachers as to what we wanted to do with the calendar, but that it warranted further discussion, and we'd like to start a committee of teachers, administrators, and parents committee members to sort of look at all the possibilities of whether we should. I mean, the choice could be, we don't change anything, but, but is, it doesn't make sense to make calendar changes so that we don't end late in June for years in which Labor Day starts late. I updated... I updated the sort of description of the survey. It wasn't able to get up, up there, but hopefully we'll get it up there the next time so it can be available to the community. Do we want to invite people at this point to submit applications to this committee? Do we want to? What? So, so there'll be a formal message going out to parents. But, but we ask, can we invite you now if you're interested in being part of that calendar committee? It's a small group, we're.
I have a motion to make to.
It's a union, do we need a motion for the school committee to establish that?
Is it our committee or the superintendent's committee?
It's a joint committee, it's not just us. Yeah.
Well, I think would be, it's, it's a, it's a committee we're going to put together. And people will be invited, but, but Jason and I need to talk about it. And because we certainly want representation from the teachers' union, and we also want to have from administrators.
But is it a supervisor, superintendent advisory committee? Or is it a school committee?
Well, I don't think we have decided that yet.
But I would guess the former, given how the kinds of people are going to be involved in this.
Okay, so we don't need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, so it's teachers, administrators, parents slash community members, and school community members.
And school community.
Yeah. So, I'm promising things on your behalf, but you should get a notice inviting you to apply. We're looking for people to apply. We're not, we're, we're looking to make this a small and manageable committee, but we do want people who are particularly interested in this issue to come to apply.
So, curriculum?
The only thing, we, at the first part of the joint meeting, we reviewed the AHS handbook.
Okay, facilities?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, policy?
Okay, two things. One is that I received an email from Lisa Reynolds, who spoke in public participation, asking that we discuss the cell phone policy in the policy committee. So, I said that I'd bring it to the table here for your blessing to go and discuss it in policy. Before we do that, I'd like Dr. McNeil possibly to talk to her and sort of have a conversation about where she's at and where we're at. So, you know, just sort of a homework, so when we invite her to the meeting, that there's a baseline conversation before we get there. The other thing is that we mentioned the homeschool policy as attached to the Arlington High Program of Studies, that they had a statement that reflected it. And there was a little bit of confusion as to where our policy was going, where it stood as a result of our recodification. And our existing policy does state that students may attend with superintendent's approval. That's, I pulled the policy, so I was messing with the machine. It is, I lost, I lost the policy. IHBG homeschooling. And that we align with the MASC policy, and it's the superintendent who signs off on it, not the parent. But if we want to talk about that, we'll just add that to the next agenda for, for policies. And if there's anything else that has come up regarding policies after the recodification, please send a note to Karen so we can get listed for an agenda, and we can schedule a meeting.
Legal services?
We had the community relations subcommittee, Jennifer's subcommittee, we had referred to policies, the surplus space.
Yep.
Suggestions about, yeah, so remember, that was like, we were going to get, the idea that we had talked about, the three of us had talked about, was getting a report. That was sort of, do you remember that?
Yeah, where's it, yeah, where's it going, I haven't been to the meetings.
So, you remember, we had, we had referred to the, that surplus space policy, which, which covers after-school usage?
Yeah. I think that got lost in the policy.
I think it got lost because we didn't really spend a lot of time talking about it, because we didn't have surplus space.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no.
Was that the other one?
No, no, no.
Okay, yeah.
So, it needs to go, on our next meeting, we should bring that up to discussion.
Okay.
Then I'll, I'll pull out the recommendation, the proposal that came from community relations, which I also.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're, that's.
That can get added?
That can add to the agenda, so I just, because I don't want to forget about that, that's the.
Make, make sure Karen gets that.
Lynn, you?
Yeah.
You want to get it to Karen, okay?
Okay. High school building committee, nothing more?
We're good. Big week.
We're going to have a meeting.
Liaison?
No, at some point. We're going to have a.
Oh, the Gibbs, yes, they are going to have a meeting.
Yeah, we are.
Yes, we are.
Yep.
Okay. Liaison reports, announcements, or future agenda items? Mr. Haner?
I attended the Edco School Committee roundtable. We discussed professional development with regard to, the main focus was on the recent changes the past year or so since '17, teacher certification, the, the shift on the amount of PDPs for teachers. It lent its, according to the school community members, they feel that it lent itself more to helping schools with their strategic planning and stuff. And I asked the presenter to send me his presentation, and I'll, I'll pass it through the chair to all the members and stuff. I just asked you all to remember, and he kept emphasizing, this was his interpretation of this aspect of it. And then, I'll hold my announcements, I'll have to, any other.
Couple announcements. This Friday, January 25th, 7 o'clock, at Catella Concert, to honor the life of Catherine Melatesta, who passed away a few years ago tragically, young. And lots of music and singing, and it should be a lot of fun. And then, on Saturday, there's Battle of the Bands, which is a high school bands, it's a lot of fun.
Mr. Haner?
On February 9th, the annual Rotary Polar Plunge. I will be running into the ocean with a bunch of other crazies to help eradicate polio. And on February 14th, the Stratton 3rd graders will be having their mock town meeting at Town Hall at 9, 10 o'clock. They will be debating their articles with each other.
Great, anything else? Okay. At this point, we'll go in, will we need to return from, no? Okay, we'll go into executive session to conduct strategy session, and we will not return, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, Mr. Haner?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Aye.
Lookman?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Six ayes, one no.